Okay, we're recording.
Good.
All right. This is a our township board work session and we're eating since we have a 5:30 board meeting tonight, too. So pardon us if anybody chokes. Uh, it's just 4:13 PM, Wednesday, July 5th, 2023. If you wanna do a roll call?
Okay, so trustee Kida will be joining us shortly. He's in the Roads Committee meeting right now. So trustee Winslow?
Present.
Oh, there's trustee Kida's here. Um, trustee Iverson?
Here.
Trustee Marks?
Present.
Grab a sandwich.
Um, treasurer Johnson?
Here.
Clerk Quatari is here and supervisor Durant?
Here.
Um, staff presence is attorney Zappa's with us. Manager Cangus is out right now, so. Okay.
Was he gonna zoom in for this?
No, he's in Zoom for the board meeting.
Okay. Okay. Um, well, we have no public. Any chance you've got any emails?
Nope.
Okay. All right, so you should have received, I know Randy sent it, copy of, I don't know if you got Roger's letter?
No, didn't get that. They got the investment policy, the old, the older one we were working off of.
Yeah, I was thinking that I forwarded that to them, but it wouldn't be in the packet, but maybe I sent it separately. Okay, so I think we decided we were gonna look at the investment policy first. Is that right, Roger? And then the, um...
It doesn't matter. You just basically need to decide how much breadth or scope of authority the board wants to delegate to treasurer. And maybe it should be somewhat consistent with what actual practice has been. I don't know exactly what that is, but treasurer's input will be kind of important on that.
Okay, you can let us know.
If my memory serves right, Ernie, you did a lot of the investment, but you really didn't consult us a lot of times on it. You kinda just did it on your own, right?
Yeah.
So really, the treasurer had past practice, has had a lot of autonomy as far as what they've invested, so. And I don't have a problem with that, but previous treasurers, going way back, did lock up some money for a long period of time, one time, at a very low end. So I don't know if, maybe it should be where the treasurer just lets us know what they're gonna do, you know, so they don't make a blunder and lock up our money for a long period of time. And Ernie, remember, I'm not gonna say the person, but he knows who I'm talking about.
I know, we were referring to, yeah.
Yeah.
Especially in the environment that we have going on right now, you have to be really careful how you choose to do the investments. And if you get a new person in without any previous knowledge...
That's the key, right there.
Right, without any previous financial experience in nonprofits, you run the risk. And it wouldn't be bad to have it come to the board prior to implementing it. It's just informational. Can just come as a written report from the treasurer with the anticipated whatever.
We have two reports, oh, sorry, um, that we haven't been able to utilize for a while because of the changeover in staff. One is called the treasurer's report, and we saw the first one, I think, at the last meeting. And it's a snapshot of where we are at the end of, in this case, it was March, it's the one I'm looking at. And it has general fund, fire department, liquor improvements, library, stormwater, wastewater, shows all of them. It shows the totals of our investments at the bottom. So this usually was in the packet every month, years, years past. There's also another one that Ernie used to give us periodically of the actual investments. And it showed which institution it was with, um, the rate of interest and what the expiration date was. And then it was spread out among the different funds as well, saying, so as an example, just off the top of my head, this isn't real. Let's say at Bank XYZ, we have two CDs, $250,000 each, that might be made up of maybe like $100,000 for the fire department, $100,000 for Public Works, you know, that could be broken down. But it gives you an idea of where the investments are, when they're gonna expire, what the interest rate is, so that it could be a conversation piece for the treasurer, especially if a new person comes in that hasn't been doing this for 100 years. Um, then they have something to work from as well. They'll know that they have to go to Bank XYZ in March because the CD is gonna come up in April, right? And we had also talked, I had asked Roger if this, these policies should go to the banking institutions or financial institutions, and he said yes. So we talked about putting these together, the two documents making just one, and then that gives the treasurer a chance, when he goes, or he or she goes to renew the investments, can give that to him as an update. Excuse me, the one, the resolution actually lists the financial institutions that we can deposit in, or that we do deposit. No, let me back up.
That we can't.
That we can, yes. Um, if we choose not to, or if there's other ones we can add, then that document can be updated, you know, whenever. You can see on your copies, that one's been amended four times since it was put into place. So once this is established and we get that other investment spreadsheet updated, the assessor was working on that because she was the deputy treasurer at the time, um, that can be part of our normal operations, so that when something comes up, we'll know about it ahead of time. And maybe we remind the treasurer because they're new. Um, when this comes up in July, maybe we have a conversation and say, well, where should we go next? Or, you know, which, because you can only put so much so many places. And the interest has to be handled differently because you're only allowed to invest that, well, 250 is the limit for security reasons. So usually when we get an account that's up to like 260 or 270 because of interest, um, Ernie will go and move the money, you know, put it somewhere else. If it's big enough, he could put it in another CD somewhere if he wanted to. Or, you know, maybe we've got a project coming up and maybe he says, hey, we got $20,000 of interest, what should we do with it? Any ideas? You know, so the board's got input on what happens with the funds, which is our job, regardless of the officers. We're all entrusted with this money, so it gives us a little more opportunity to have that input. Ernie, what do you wanna share? Because this is, you've learned a lot from, you know, just the changeover in the office of things that have happened.
It's just staying on top of it all, and that, too. And biggest thing is investing in it. Right now, we're working with five financial institutions in there. We have the, uh, Raymond James, which we have sweep accounts in there. And as you said, a report that you get, we spread it, we give you a report and it's spread against all the departments by percentage point and that. So we get an interest, it's back, back into all the different funds and funds and that, so it's always there and that, we know what's there all the time. We have on the incredible bank, we have a sweep account and that, and we also have, I should go back to the Raymond James, we also have two CDs there and that. And I think those are the three-month ones, I don't have them in front of my head, but look at that. Incredible Bank, we have sweep accounts, they're going in, I don't know, there's about seven or eight financial institutions that they deal with, but we have to deal with the one that's local, that's their responsibility to do that. And we have, uh, two CDs with them at this point in time and that. And then we go to the range bank, we have sweep accounts there and we have two CDs there. Uh, I can't tell you whether it's three, six, or a year amount at this point in time. We have at the Nicolay Bank, we have two CDs there and that. And that, then we have the Huntington Bank, which is a savings account, which is a general fund and that. That was put in there because we had some dollars coming in and we had to put them somewhere, so we opened up another account there, so it's simply a savings account. Right now, that's at $255,000. So we got $5,000 there. I can go over 105% over a 250. So I'm, I'm right at that level right now, I have to move some money and that. But where I move it, I have to work with the KIM and that and see where I can take that um, 250, $2,500 or $5,000 out of there and that. And the interest we get from these CDs, they were going back on the CB, CDs, I changed that, they're coming back into the, the KIM is getting, the township is getting them, and she's rearranging, putting them back into all the different accounts. So it's spread across every, the whole array of all the different departments and that. So I don't have anything over 250. I can't say that because I don't know what the interest is. Once the interest comes in, we take a look at it and then they send that every three months. And then she, she does the spread of, on the spreadsheets, move that all the way through and that. So we have those five units right now that we, we deal with at this point in time and that. Before I invest at all, I check with the different departments. And if one comes up, let's say it's for wastewater, I'll check with Lenny. Do you have anything coming up that you need, any projects coming up? If not, can I invest it for three months, six months, or a year? Depending on what they tell me, then I can make that decision because if we have to break it, we got, we could cost us money and that. So I try to stay within what the realms that the different departments tell me and that. And it's, it's trying to stay ahead of the game and that. 250 is like a stay out, but I'll tell you, at times, it goes above it, we have to do something and it takes a little time to move the money around and that, too. And so it's, it's interesting that way, yes.
And something I think people might not realize that makes it your job harder, and it would be hard for a new person, is some of these CDs pop up, but they're only good for seven months instead of an even six or an even 12. And he has to juggle that during that period. And I think that we need to be extremely careful if we have to replace someone who we have all his confidence in one day. We have to be careful, we need to just be patient, but not give all latitudes that we give to the people that we've entrusted. And I think that's what we're doing, I see it that way. But I, I think we need to appreciate how difficult it can be with these odd monthly terms. Is that perfect?
Yeah, because right now Nicolay Bank has 5% for 10 months. And Honor Credit Union has 4.66% for 10 months. So you have to keep watching these things, whether it's three, six, or 10 months or 12 months, you're trying to do some planning out there and you know it's gonna, rather than come up in six months or a year, it's gonna come up in 10 months, though. You have to look at things like this here.
Yes, they're all looking for business ranges, that's something out there, too. You know, they're, they're betting the feds are going to, uh, increase it again and that, they're just, you know, they're just playing a game, that's why they're short-term.
And they're only for a specific point in time, and you have to jump in that timeframe and that. And they may say, okay, we're done now. Okay, that's fine, I'll go talk to someone else, and they may have something.
Sure, and if you don't do it, they automatically go to what the interest rate is. It's just like our home rates, right? Yeah.
So anything that comes up, I'll usually get a notice about, only about two weeks ahead of time, so I have to keep it and that, ahead of it. They don't wanna tell you, they might rather for you not to do anything and then they reissue them at their rate.
Sure, sure. That's business.
Oh, yeah. There's things like this here.
Well, let me ask you this, Ernie, treasurer Johnson, is how hard it would it be to give us a report every month, just basically showing what our investment?
That's the spreadsheet.
That's what I'm working on right now.
And then, and then if you're gonna make any moves, you can just indicate on that sheet that you're gonna be doing this or that or whatever.
Just highlight it.
Yeah, just highlight it, so then the board knows, so if some, so then if we look at it and say, well, what's going on here? We can at least make contact with you and, and, or whoever, you know, if you're not here for some reason, whoever that position is, if they're not making prudent moves, we could kinda catch them before that happens.
What that report will show is a maturity date. And once you look at a maturity date, you know, there's things that'll have to be done at that point in time. And I'm not gonna, I have to say, okay, it's due tomorrow, I have to do something tomorrow, I can't wait till the board meeting and that. So you'll know that ahead of time and that, too, and we'll move forward and that. And I try to keep, keep ahead of it and that and...
Well, what we're trying to avoid here is we, we ended up with, way back, now this is, this is probably 15 or 20 years ago now, but still, it's prudent.
Yeah.
Someone locked our money up for, what is it, about three years?
Five years.
Five years at a very low interest rate.
Never bothered.
And the board didn't know until it was too late.
Well, it was a treasurer.
Yeah.
I mean, it wasn't just someone, a past treasurer.
A past treasurer, but I'm trying to keep the names down, down low, but anyway, you were, we could've gotten a lot more interest, but they'd locked it up for five years and just wasn't a very good decision at the time, no.
Well, that's what happens when one person's decision makes. So that's why it's better to...
Well, and it's their responsibility. It is the treasurer's job and they have to do it. So it's not like they were doing anything wrong.
No, but it's all of our job.
It's just the methodology of it, right?
It's everyone's job on this board, too.
And I think about half the board is a little bit aware of what's available. And we, I'm hoping that they all share the conversations that we have, because I think you, we can all help. We can all help, Frick.
Roger had his hand up. Excuse me.
Um, you have a little bit more fundamental question that you have to ask here. Um, the policies were sent to me about two months ago, not quite, six weeks ago, with suggestions to revise, but if you look at, the question is how much authority is the treasurer going to have? And for example, if you look at the one that, uh, the Investment and Depository Designation Resolution, that basically says that the treasurer is only allowed to invest in township funds and certificates of deposits, savings accounts, deposit accounts or depository receipts of a bank, and it has to be of a bank who has a branch in Michigan, and there are other, or, or a credit union, or a savings and loan. But that is pretty restrictive. State law says that a township can invest in, and it lists a long list of things that they're allowed to invest, can't generally invest in stocks, for example, in the stock market, can't invest in commodity futures, hoping that the price of corn goes up or something. But that policy then says if the township wants to invest, or even if the treasurer wants to invest in something other than those couple of ones I just recited, they must first come to the township board to get advance approval to do that. Where the conflict is, is in the other policy, it basically, at least by strong inference, gives the treasurer very broad authority to invest in almost anything that's allowable under state law. So you need to hone in, it's hard for me to make a recommendation on what path you should follow, how to revise these things without knowing what the board's preference is on how much authority the treasurer will have. And that comes, takes into account that you might someday have a new treasurer and you might not look at this for five years again. Um, so you have to decide and, and tell me, I guess, do you want the treasurer to only be able to invest in these types of investments and everything else has to come to the board for prior approval? Or do you want to give the, um, the treasurer the broad type of authority that's in the other document you have and the two conflict, in my view, of what we have right now? And on the prior treasurer, she actually got a pretty good rate, but she locked it in for several years, so the query comes up on how are we gonna pay a light bill? Or payroll, or anything else on, you know, on day-to-day needs because the funds are unlocked up.
Well, why don't we poll the board so that he'll know?
So I have a question, Roger. So if, um, if we say we want it tight, okay, we, the treasurer can always come and ask us to expand outside of that.
Yes, and the township can, and the treasurer can kind of say, this is what I'm recommending. I think that the CD rates are really terribly low right now, but the, you know, treasury bills are, are very safe, and even if I don't have authority to invest in those directly, the township does. So then it would be the recommendation of the treasurer to invest in some other, or a commercial paper, for example. Um, you're allowed to invest in commercial paper, but I don't know that you are.
We're not, and I don't wanna get in that ballgame.
Well, and there's a very peculiar...
Someone new might, you don't, you don't know.
Well, and there's a very peculiar provision, because one of your, after safety and after rate of return comes diversity is, and in one of your policies, it says you shouldn't be investing more than 50% in commercial paper, which kinda made my hair stand up. Um, that, that's, uh, you know, that's a lot of money, then, that's not much diversity, and that's one of your riskier things, if you will, to invest in, you'll get a better rate of return. But that's the type, what we need to address is, do we want it to come back to the township board on, you know, list the things that the treasurer can do and anything else has to come back to the township board? And these are the things that will come back to the township board. And therein you list, basically what the statute says, there are certain types of mutual funds even, that are permissible if they meet certain criteria. Um, yep, so I guess...
Is it possible to even list those, or is it gonna be, would they change too frequently?
Um, well, it's not a list of by vendor or anything, it's, it's certain state criteria that if it meets this provision and that provision and the other provision under state law, then you can invest in it. So it's gonna require some research, it's not saying like Investment Company of America Fund B3 or something like that. It's not that type of a guideline, well, it's not a guideline, no, it's not that type of a recitation or criteria, it just says, uh, let's find, mutual funds registered under the Investment Company Act of 1940, Title I of Chapter 686, with authority to purchase only investment vehicles that are legal for direct investment by public corporations. So in other words, that one is actually referring to federal law on what type of mental units can invest in what type of mutual funds. Um, so that, and that's in your policy already, but the question then becomes, do you want your treasurer to be able to have the free rein to go ahead and invest in those types of things in his or her own discretion? Or do you want those decisions, do you wanna give a limited type of portfolio that the treasurer can always go to and invest in, and then the broader ones under state or federal law have to come back to the township board?
That sounds reasonable to me.
Because the two policies are not consistent with each other.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd rather keep it tighter than loose.
Okay.
I don't like the 50% of commercial paper.
Oh, that's, that has to come out.
Yeah, I thought...
I don't know where that came from.
From someone else's.
Ernie, from your perspective, do you feel like if we were asked, asked of you to get our approval for everything, would you feel more handcuffed or would you feel more relieved?
I think, as Randy, Roger said, there's certain areas I think the treasurer should just be able to do, and other areas that you have to come to the board to do that. There's two areas here and that, like CDs and everything else, I'm dealing with those, and savings accounts and things like this here, and sweep accounts, those are going on continually and that, too. And to make some adjustments there, you have to come to the board. It may happen, say tomorrow, we don't have a board meeting for two weeks, things like this here. So I think the area, the direction that Roger's going is probably the best way to go, is kinda define the areas that the treasurer can work in without really coming, having to come to the board and that. And then those other areas, we have to come to the board, like commercial paper. I think that, you have to come to the board for things like this here, because that could be some problems if you don't understand it all and that, too. And I don't understand it, that's why I don't wanna get into it and that, too, so...
That's all right, that's safe.
So that's, that's, that's the direction I'd like to go and that myself.
And at least what you have, from what I could gather from the last 15 years here or more, the areas that you're in now are relatively safe. They don't, they might not get a high interest, but they're not, you're not losing money in there.
No, we're not losing money.
You're gonna, you're gonna get some sort of return regardless if it's like a 0.5% or whatever, but, because I know the last few years it's been pretty horrible, but, but at least we're not losing money. So, so the areas you're in now, we're not gonna lose money, it's just you might not get the best return.
Well, right now, I'm getting fairly good return.
Yeah.
Especially some of them that were coming up, I was getting a 0.1, a 0.05. That was it, and all of a sudden, things changed and I jumped on it right away, the minute they came to do it, I did the best I could. Right now, I'm talking about four, 4.1, 4.5. I don't think I have any five right now because it wasn't that point. Now, if I have any, it's almost gonna get up to five, but everything's over four at this point in time.
That just means that when you have to borrow money, it's gonna be a lot more interest-wise.
Yes.
So I, I think we need to be as conservative, very conservative, I think we need to recognize that we are, um, using our taxpayers' dollars for all of this, and they expect us to do a good job and be conservative, just like when we do things in our other public entities, we expect people to do the right thing. Don't buy cryptocurrency, don't buy commercial paper, you know, and that's probably not even be addressed, and someone will go right outside that edge and do it. So I'm, I go for conservative.
And then also, too, is there, Roger, is there a time limit as far as investment-wise, so we can't lock it up for like three or four years?
That's something that can be put in.
Cause I would wish...
Or, or you can say that within the treasurer's, I've seen them where it says, within the treasurer's discretion, if it looks like there's sufficient funds for cash flow and you get a better rate of return, you know, you're granting that discretion, but same thing. You could say that anything more than, I don't know, one year has to come back to the board. I'm just making up that number, it could be...
I would say 18 months at the maximum and that, too.
But I agree, but we still need to see that spreadsheet all the time, so we, every month.
I understand that, I understand that.
But I mean, that's the protection side of it, for the rest of us.
Yeah.
But yeah, 18 months maybe, if you think we wanna put that in there?
Well, I...
If it's necessary.
The point is, I think he has to, I don't think he's gonna have any problem coming back to the board if he's, can get a three-year commitment at 7% or 8%, you know?
Yeah.
You gotta leave that wiggle room for the treasurer to be able to offer that.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't put a blanket end to the time limit if it comes back to the board to be granted.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying that because on that previous example, you know, we locked up a whole ton of money for a very... we locked up a whole ton of money for a very lot, maybe it was good at the time, Roger, but it went way up. And we could take advantage of that because it was locked up for four, you know, five years.
My understanding is it was only in there a couple of months before it was discovered.
Yeah, I think-
So, and it was, it was a really good rate at the time, but there wasn't any money to pay bills with.
It's like I said, before I do the investments, I always check what the department is. What are they doing, three, six, and a year month out? And I say, if I invest it for a year, are you going to need the money?
Yeah, but think about this though. You can't think about you. You have to think, all these seats right here.
The position.
Yeah, we have to think about the position. It's not about what we know, he's already done this, he's familiar with it, he's known the banks, he's taken care of it. We got to think of seven new people coming in. So this is the guideline we have to give them. If we're not here or when we're not here.
Yeah, because the next treasurer, you know, the next treasurer come in and say, well, you know, we're getting, say, we're getting 5% right now. Oh, that's good, you know, maybe that's as much as we're going to get. Locks it up for a year or two. And then a couple of months later, it goes to 9% or something, you know. So that's what I guess, you know, we're looking at. And I know it's volatile right now, it's a volatile time in the bond market and such. But yeah, you're right, Lynn, the position has to have some guidelines and some flexibility so they know what to do.
I actually like a year. Okay, I don't think you should tie your money up for more than a year without a review. I also do not think that it's going to continue to increase interest-wise for over a year.
We don't know that, that doesn't even come into play.
No, I like a year.
Yeah, think about the action, that's what has to be-
The other thing is, these policies need to be reviewed annually.
Yes.
So we have, we have a policy that it looks to me hasn't changed since, what, 2008?
Yes.
Oh my goodness. That is like a very long time without being looked at. We need a log, we need to be reviewing these. So maybe, I still, I would like a year. But I'll defer to Bernie who has done some of this longer than I have for sure. So if you think 18 months is long, you know, we've all invested money, those of us sitting here. Okay, it's not like we haven't done personal investments and we probably have advisors. None of us are 24, you know. So we're, we know what kind of is going on out there.
I wouldn't invest for anything over 12 months far as the township is concerned.
Even personally, probably not.
Because you look when our actual revenue comes in. Comes in in July?
December.
Actually, it comes in in December. What we get in July for the township is really nothing. We only have one, one big shot of revenue starting July, December, first workday in December. And we have a big influx of dollars up. But the problem I have is that all these dollars come in and we have to disperse them to all these entities. I don't have the opportunity to go and invest any money because it's in and out and that. I have to look and see what's coming in far as the township is concerned and as far as the fire department is concerned. Now, the fire department you have to be aware of because under Act 33, we can't really keep any of that money. That money always be spent that one year. The only money we can keep is the apparatus dollars and that.
Right.
So that's another thing you have to be concerned with and that too. So if we do anything with the fire department, we're only talking three months maybe? Six months at the maximum and that? So it's things like this here and that. Whereas then you have to look at what's coming in for all the other departments, wastewater, water and that. And what can and we can't do in the general fund and that? And see where our balances are. Right now, if you literally look at our financial reports and that, and we get every month, the dollars are there. But you also look at the balance sheets. You look at the revenue and then you look at the liabilities on the end. So you kind of balance them out and that too. We have investments out there. But we also have to be concerned with what I refer to as what's coming up in the next six months and that. And it has to do with salaries and all this other stuff we have to pay out. So that money, we may have a lot of dollars here. But it only comes in once a year far as general fund is concerned. Wastewater and water comes in on a monthly basis. But still, you have to be concerned with what the cost factors are and that. One example is that we had the, that pump go over on the well over there. What was it, $30,000, $40,000? We had to pay, we had to pay it now to get the pump. So we have to have dollars like that associated. We have that over on 41. We had the sewer problem over there off of 41 by the strip mall over there. That was 40, $50,000 it cost. We had to hire in people to come in and do the digging. We have to have those dollars available. It seems like we have a lot of dollars here. But if not, we have to take our trip to the banks, see can we borrow some money now? And that may take some time to do it. Trying to explain that to some of the people why we have these dollars here becomes difficult at times and that too.
And then picture that. Because if we have to keep enough in the general fund to be able to do this stuff. Because there aren't separate checking accounts for all of these things. You know, it's just limited to a certain amount of funds. So the general fund pays the $40,000 for all of this, whatever the bills are, okay? Because we write the checks out of there. And then we'd have to look at that spreadsheet that we don't have that says, you know, we've got this amount vested here and this amount vested here. Do we need to break those? Or is there money, like in that savings account he was talking about? That we could transfer that money? Is there interest that we've put in another account that we could use that? So it's not just a matter of just writing a check. You know, you have to figure out where the money's coming from, which is what he always said. That's what he means. It means which fund is going to be paying this?
So Roger, if we all agree that we want to be conservative, you can take that paper and create what will-
I think so. It's going to look a lot more like your depository one than the other one.
Which is what we are, that's what we all just said, right?
So basically, you're going to combine both documents.
Yes, and the one is, I think is the plan.
Yeah.
I have a question. I'm reading this, it's probably not the one you had, probably the one that Lynn sent out. And reading through, there's some, there was a sentence in here that really confused me. And I read it three or four times. It's called, I don't know what you have.
I got both of them.
Safekeeping and custody?
Which document?
Okay, page 28, well, yeah.
Okay, I'm down to, "The market value of any collateral or security for uninsured excess deposits shall at all times equal or exceed 105% of those deposits in the excess of applicable." To me, the wording doesn't seem right there.
Well, are we, at one point, what is now Incredible Bank, they've been many things over the years. Back, I think, when they were, after they were First of America and they went to, and they were something, when they got bought out by the Wisconsin bank. We had collateralization agreements.
Yes.
And those are a really good thing because you should never have more than $250,000 ever in one bank. Because your accounts are consolidated, even if you've got two CDs. A collateralization agreement, however, says the bank will guarantee that our funds, even if there's $300,000 in it, they will put up specific bank assets, liquid funds that in their, in their portfolio. And those funds have to be the same type, such as CDs, for example, that would be, that we could deposit in directly. Then, so then if the bank folds, we have this agreement that they are, they're secured for the excess deposits, for that excess for $50,000. But if it was actually $50,000 extra, $50,000 over the FDIC limit, this is saying their collateral can't just be dollar for dollar. It's got to be at least 105%. So if there's, you know, if there's $100,000 extra, you got to have 105,000 of their collateral securing our deposits. That's a pretty slick arrangement and it worked. And actually, that's probably the last time about that I've done anything specifically relating to the treasurer or the investment policy. But that was specifically, we came up with that plan with, it wasn't called Incredible Bank then, and I'm struggling to think of what they really were then.
River Valley.
River Valley, that's it. And they, they were able to do that, they agreed to do that. And that is authorized under Michigan law. You can do collateralization agreements like that. So that way you don't have, you know, 29 accounts in 29 banks when you start getting close to the 250 limit in that particular institution. You can deal with less financial and fewer financial institutions, but enter into these collateralization agreements. That's pretty, that's a pretty slick arrangement. And that's what that sentence is referring to is you better have 105%. Their collateral has to be at least 105% of whatever the excess non-insured amount is. Because the FDIC only insures up to 250 per bank.
Okay, I wasn't, I didn't understand. I read it three or four, I didn't understand. Now, on the collateralization, River Valley had it. We had it up to $700,000 and they bought, they bought an insurance policy to do that. And they had that for, I don't know how many years. And all of a sudden they said, we're not doing it anymore.
Okay.
And that.
So do we have collateralization accounts at any institution right now?
No, we have just the sweep accounts, which are moving up to other financial institutions. They have, let's go back to the Incredible Bank. 248, I think. No, $243,000 is all that can have. If it was over $243,000, they have to go to another financial institution. So that's the way it goes. They got, I have to look it up, there's six, seven, eight financial institutions. Now, if we need money from that, they start pulling them one after another from there so we can cover it and that. The same thing's that from Range Bank, and that's the same thing and that. And we have the same thing at Raymond James and that. They have the sweep accounts.
So that became the trend.
That's similar in concept to a collateralization agreement. And up until the early 2000s, I can't tell you exactly when, those were illegal.
The sweep accounts?
Yeah, for us to be using as a municipality. A private corporation or investor could use them, no problem. But the statute says that you can only, that a municipal governmental unit can only deposit in a bank or financial, I think the term they use in the statute is a financial institution, which has a definition of having either a branch or its principal office in Michigan. So what these, what you're calling the sweep accounts, and sometimes they go by different names, sometimes there'll be 50, 70 different banks that they deal with all over the country. And very few of them have a Michigan branch office. And almost none of them have their principal office in Michigan. You can go down the list and there'll be a handful that have offices in Michigan. The statute got amended a while back. I've been doing this too long to guess how long ago that was, I'll probably be wrong. That now permits it if it meets certain criteria. And so we can do that. And if we are, and we're currently doing that, I take it?
Right.
Okay, so we want to be able to, I'm assuming, address that directly in your investment policy that authorizes the treasurer to engage in that. Because otherwise, depending on the account, sometimes the account doesn't accrue interest during the seven months the CD is in effect per se. It comes all in a big lump when it matures. So that's what puts you over is if it's that type of an account. So you don't want to tie the treasurer's hands necessarily to have to call a special meeting. The treasurer probably ought to have the authority to utilize those types of accounts as long as they satisfy Michigan law.
What, two questions I have though. I thought the, the way you described it to me before, and you actually said it, 105% over is-
That's my understanding.
That the state law allows the account to go 5% over the 250 before something has to be done?
I will take a look at that, I doubt it.
I wonder if that's where you got that.
Because-
That's where I got that.
Because the FDIC is the Federal Deposit Insurance Corporation. That has nothing to do with state law. And the FDIC only insures a depositor to 250. It doesn't insure to, you know, 250 and $10. So as soon as it gets over 250, you're running bare, so to speak. You're not, you're not insured on any excess. Which is why the 243 or whatever it is makes perfect sense to me because that means you're getting close. And if you've got a CD, especially that pays in a lump of interest rather than just gradually accruing the interest while it's on deposit, you could very quickly end up over that limit, so.
Which brings me to my second question then, is some of the accounts, we get quarterly statements. I don't know which ones, you might even remember. And some of them, the money just stays in there, which means we're going over the 250 on a, you know, maybe a yearly basis until, until it gets to the 105% that we were thinking about. Or we get a check. So I think it would be better for the treasurer's position to not have to make that decision or decide and worry about moving that money. We should either say that it's going to get invested into some other account or deposit it, I should say. Or we just get a check whenever it comes to, like, at the end of the year, if it's going to dump all at once, we get a check. If it's quarterly interest and it's going to take us over 250, we get a check.
Yeah, if it's just going to mature at the end of a year, let's say, I don't know that you necessarily want a check because usually, well, usually, but often you'll just roll it over. So you don't necessarily want to have that check in hand and have to deal with depositing the check and so forth. But just go there and fill out the new CD form and roll it over.
Well, it doesn't have to be-
Could be a check to the balance that it goes over 243 or something.
And it doesn't have to be, it's not a paper check anymore anyway. They would just deposit it like into the checking account or into a savings account.
Well, that doesn't work because it doesn't matter if it's in the CD or it's in your checking account. If it's at the same bank, you're over. You're over.
The other thing is-
No, 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 wait a minute. Now, you can't have more than $250,000 in a bank?
Right.
Correct.
It's not insured. You can have as much as you want.
Right, well, that's what I meant.
But you can't, it's not going to be insured if it's more than 250.
So the bank crashes, your money's gone up to 250.
Regardless of its CDs or mutual funds or cash or anything?
Yeah.
Okay, so you can have more than 250.
Yeah, you can have as much as you want.
I thought he was saying, no, no, you can have as much as you want.
Well, you don't want, you can, but you don't want to. You can, you can save money by not paying for fire insurance on the township hall. Is that a prudent fiduciary? Same concept that you can have, you know, 7 million in the bank, but you're only going to get 250, 250,000 if the bank collapses.
You can look at, you can look at your deposit into your CD and know how much interest you're going to earn and not put in more than that into a CD. There's a couple of things you can do, or Ernie knows that.
What I do right now is I'm getting a check every quarter.
From? From who?
From the different financial institutions on the CDs.
So you set that CD?
All of them?
All of them right now. I change it over, I get it from all of them now.
See, he changed it, just tell me.
You set it up that way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's okay, but here I am telling them that this is not happening and you're saying you already.
I changed it all. Example was, uh, Nickel A Bank was 263,000 dollars.
Yeah, that's a bookie.
I said, I gotta go down and break it down to 250. So I went there and I said, I need a check. Well, how do you want the check? I said, well, just write the check and send it to us. Well, we can't do that. I said, why can't you?
Well.
Well, we don't mail it.
Yeah, not post electronically.
Okay, so what they did is they cut the check, they actually brought it to the township here. I thought it was stupid, but that's not my point. But we got it down to 250 right away and that, but.
Okay, so now we're getting the excess funds.
Every.
Quarterly.
They're doing four months and six months, six months. I couldn't get to three months, so I had to go with the four month with them. I, don't ask me, I, it blew my mind, I couldn't figure it out, why?
But now is this uniform with all of them?
Yes, all of them are doing it.
All of our accounts.
Kim is getting the check every quarter on these different ones and she's then sending it to the different.
So then it's going into a bank that doesn't, we don't have 250 in there, so we don't go over that?
It's going into the, uh, whatever account it is and it's spread about all of them.
Yeah.
And if it goes to the incredible bank, then it goes into the, into the sweep accounts all the way through the line and that. Same with Range Banks and that.
So you don't have to worry about moving excess of 250 anymore?
No, no, cause I won't know that, cause every quarter it's coming back into the township. I'm not letting bill continually that.
What happens to it then? That's the part that I got lost on. When the check shows up, whether it's by personal courier, delivery or, or mail, then what happened, where does it go from there?
Kim takes it and deposits it and then she spreads it to the, to the different accounts.
That are all below.
Whatever, wherever goes in that too, at that point in time. So if it goes to the incredible bank, then it's spread in the sweep accounts through all of them. So it doesn't go over, over 243. It took a while for me to figure all this out, trying to get this taken care of and that too, so.
So where all do we have the sweep account arrangement? Incredible Bank?
Incredible Bank, Raymond James, and Range.
Range is payroll.
Range is payroll. But Range is also, uh, isn't Range also wastewater and sewer and that too? Dollars going in there?
I wonder if.
I, I have, I don't remember. Now, I asked me time to remember some of this, I don't remember.
Pardon me for getting it first, but let me see if I have it.
Something the Bidens are trying to get.
Oh, I've been hiding. But I've tried to keep everything down. So I didn't have to worry about going over 250. So every quarter, it came into the township, staff then took it and spread it to where it had to go.
So I was taking notes and, and not very well. Incredible Bank, Range Bank, and what's the third one? Oh, Raymond James.
Raymond James.
And who are they?
They're.
They're an investment company.
Yes. So let me. They've had that for many years and that, Raymond James.
He picked that one because of Raymond James Stadium down in Tampa.
I knew, I knew there was a reason.
So let me ask you this, Roger, a question. I mean, you work for a different variety of townships. Where is our policy, the newer policy, gonna fit in compared to other townships? Or is it all over the map?
Does that matter?
There's limited variation between them. Um, this, this, I'm not hearing anything that sounds stunningly strange.
Okay.
In it at all.
I'm glad you said it, not strange, I had to keep things going.
So, so, so you would be able to bring this back to us in a month?
I would think so.
Okay.
Um, the next regular meeting, well, the next regular meeting will happen.
Well, the next.
We'll get on it.
Even after that is probably not gonna happen, but a month is plausible.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's good. I, I think, uh, we've had lots of conversation and.
It was good conversation, cause we didn't, we didn't understand, some of us didn't understand what was going on.
It was a good education, I agree. Ernie taught us a lot tonight.
Yeah.
I learned a lot too.
So what type of investments, which is the second part of it, are we currently in other than CDs?
That's it, CDs and savings bond, that's it.
Okay, so for, so it's no hardship to the treasurer to say if we wanna, you know, a US Treasury bills, for example, you can't get too much safer than that other than like maybe a month ago when they almost revolted. But, um, but I mean traditionally those have, um, a high safety and a reasonable yield. That's not a hardship to have to come back to the board to say, I think we ought to consider this instead, or US savings bonds or something that permitted. We don't even have investments in those right now anyway.
I would say staying with the CDs and where we are now, it's so much easier because. Sure, we have money, but we don't have that big, big blue money. We have enough to make it easier to do it.
And then when we, when they take the excess and put it in the sweep accounts, are they giving us a list of the portfolio of what that account is invested into? Is that just CDs also?
It doesn't have the breakdown of.
Doesn't have the breakdown like that.
It just says what institution.
Know that because it has to be, and it's probably fine because under state law, these are not permissible. Uh, but, um, it has to be limited to the types of investments that a governmental unit can deposit themselves into themselves. They, same type of concept, like we can't invest directly in, in, in stocks. Um, they should not be, when they have the sweep account, putting the money into, you know, more speculative things or things that are disallowed for us to directly invest in. These indirect investments also need to comply with what we could invest in, otherwise we have a problem.
And isn't that gonna change on a regular basis?
Um, it depends, not necessarily. I mean, if we tell them that it's gotta be in this type of, if we have an investment policy that we give to them and they acknowledge receipt of and that they're going to comply with, then problem solved from our perspective.
Okay.
That, that they then have to, um, limit what the funds are put into. That shouldn't be an issue.
There's 10 or 12, I think, if I remember seeing it, sweep, sweep accounts.
From the incredible bank, I'd have to go back and look.
But I didn't see anything that said what they were investing in. Cause it could be the Bank of Texas.
We got the banks, yeah. We, banks are all over the United States and that they're investing in.
Yeah, but we don't know what they're investing in.
Right, and normally, if our money was in a CD, then this should be in a, a CD, another comparable CD from the Bank of Texas, for example. And.
It shouldn't be invested.
Yeah, they'll, they'll be spread, that's how it actually works. And then the way to make it lawful, Range, Range Bank or Incredible Bank has to get an equal number of dollars from this system back into their bank as a, as a cross deposit, if you follow what I'm saying. So that way their balance sheet balances. Cause otherwise, if it's money, just, if our money is just going out, the value of their total deposits wouldn't mesh. This has to count as part of their deposits because they're still insured.
So they're really a depository for another bank?
Yes, yes, exactly. So there's a reciprocal, when, when our money goes out, somebody else's money from that same program is coming into Range Bank or Incredible Bank or wherever to make everything balance for both the banks.
Okay, yeah. I've never seen that, Roger, so it could have happened, I have no idea.
Do you have a copy of the written agreement someplace? They're probably all the same.
Maybe someplace.
Finding anything in this building is absolutely ridiculous. The filing system is horrendous.
To redraft.
Okay.
This, but if it happens to show up when looking for something else in the relatively near future, I'd be interested in just looking at that.
The, the bank will have it and they can send you an electronic copy. So don't even look for it, just call them, ask them for the electronic copy and you're all set.
That's, yeah, that's a good point.
Okay.
That's quicker.
I guess you have to do that.
Okay, are we done with that? So we go into the resolution on that depository stuff?
Okay, so you.
It's only a work session.
Have you got enough information to kind of compile this so far?
The only, you know, really what you, there's redundancy between the two.
Yeah, I agree.
You need to kind of go through who are going to be the permissible, um, depositories.
That's the question I have, when you're going through the depositories and that. And it says, it lists that, but also down the board action, so and so board action, things have been changed, the names have been changed. Do we have to put that all in or can we stop, can we go clean?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's nuts.
Okay, okay. Now, I'd like to add in Honor Credit Union and the True North Credit Union. Honor Credit Union is, is in the township, they're building again.
That's Superior Iron Range, yeah.
That's honored now, yeah.
That's on, okay.
Yeah, but True North is not on there.
True, cause they're coming into the township. Whether we invest there or not, it's available to do something in that too, so.
And you wanted to add Raymond James too.
They're in, yeah, they're in that funny little.
They're in this down here.
Saying that they were added in 2001.
Yeah, but what we were gonna do, and the reason I wrote these on here is cause we were gonna not have these.
Yeah, he's gonna move them up though.
Oh, you are.
He's gonna take that and we'll fix them.
He's gonna make them what they are today.
Yeah.
Now, is there anything that's coming out? Now, like M Bank is not M Bank, they're Nickel A Bank.
Right.
And Citizens, are they?
That's Huntington, that's Huntington.
That's why I wrote it on top.
Yeah.
But you're talking about the ones that are coming up?
Right, yeah, on below there it tells you.
Wells Fargo is now Flagstaff.
Yes.
Well, there is still Wells Fargo.
But not yet, that's true.
There is Wells Fargo Advisors, oh yeah, there are Wells Fargo Advisors, it's here, like Raymond James.
Oh.
Yeah, you, you maybe wanna decide and.
Do we have anything there?
Uh, do you have?
No, we do not have anything at West.
At Wells Fargo Advisors.
Objection to deleting them?
No, no.
Available depository?
Yeah, I would take them off too.
I'll tell you a story if you want me to.
No, I can tell you more.
I can tell you some too. And then there's one other one in the township, First National Bank is in the township.
First?
Yeah, they're an investment.
They're an investment.
Yeah, they're an investment over in the.
They're an investment placed by Big B's.
Yeah.
That was the First National Bank of long ago, kinda.
It's not, no, it's not the original First National.
Some of the people are there, yes.
Okay.
But these would be more than enough by adding in a couple of.
Okay, so you have enough places and we really choose to use township places first. We don't know.
I don't think he's ever.
He's never done that.
Okay.
We try, but sometimes you just don't, can't do it.
Okay, so, okay, so you're good, right, Roger?
Well, like American General Financial Group, is that?
Who are they?
I, I have no idea. That's not a name that's familiar to me down there, is it?
They don't know. Yeah, take it off.
Take it off.
If we don't know them, we don't know.
We as, we as a board can always add it in, that's no problem.
There are some governmental units that, um, that don't have tax, you know, big tax revenue like this, that only name two.
Yeah.
Of depositories for the, ever. You know, so, and they're the ones that they physically, literally use. You don't, I mean, you know, the treasurer doesn't have to come back. If there are good rates at a different institution, if it's on the list, you know, the treasurer can just deposit there. But you don't have to list every financial institution in the world in your depository authorization.
Okay.
I think just make this clear cut as much as we possibly can.
MoMart's Financial Services, are we using?
No.
Because some of those you have to be fairly cautious about in terms of whether they have any product that is guaranteed. I know that Edward Jones does have accounts, for example, that are FDIC insured. But I don't know about some of these others.
Now, Edward Jones, I know the individual who's doing it up in Nagani and I talked to him about it. He says, we don't do, uh, communities or townships and that.
Okay.
I can't tell you why, but that's statement he made, so I says, okay.
They probably don't insure.
So I, I figured, well, I'm not even gonna talk to them anymore then.
So should we, we'll cross them off just also.
Yes.
And Standard Federal.
Standard Federal.
I don't know what that is.
I don't know that either.
We got enough.
Yeah. AG Edwards and Sons.
We got 13 of them already.
We'll keep the people that.
Counting the new ones.
That he's involved with.
Superior Iron Range.
I'll guarantee you, if someone finds out they're not on the list, they'll come knocking on the door.
North Country. Yeah, North Country was M Bank.
Yeah.
So they can, oh yeah, change in First National of Nagani changed to Range Bank, okay. I think I'm good.
Okay, okay.
Okay, now, we got another issue here that I think we need to look at.
Where?
In the policies, the second page under the safekeeping. Um, we know that we had at least two, at least one board member and one staff member that put down collateral on a loan that this board knew nothing about. And I think that's pretty serious and it should never happen again.
No.
What did they do?
Does it say that they can do that?
I don't think so.
What did they do?
They, they signed, they co-signed for a loan, that's what they did.
They used our, some property collateral against the loan, yes.
For this building and the.
Yeah, I don't know how much to say.
That's enough.
When was that done?
Before I was sitting here.
Okay, wow.
So really what you wanted to say is, is that no collateral? How do you want it to be worded?
Well, the board needs to be.
You don't want anyone to be able to do that?
Not a staff member, Roger.
That's improper material for this agreement.
You think so?
Yes, that they, under state law, again, the treasurer's duties are pretty much defined as managing the funds and money of the township. Uh, the, the receipts, the dollars. And that situation, which I didn't also know anything about, uh, but, uh, was land. Big land was used as collateral. And the treasurer has no authority to deal with non-cash or cash equivalent assets.
Because the loan is not an investment and this is investment, so.
Well, and, and the land is not funds. Um, it's an asset, but the land is not money. And the treasurer is responsible for managing the money. And the statutes are fairly specific on that. Now, that are nothing wrong saying, saying that you can't have a policy that says that.
That's what I was gonna say.
I'm just telling you, it doesn't go in, it shouldn't go in here.
That should be a board policy.
We need a board policy for that then, okay.
Yes, and that, that's completely satisfactory to do that, but, so, so don't mishear me.
This is just investing, okay.
This doesn't go, it doesn't go in here.
We're pretty well done right now then, I think.
Roger's gonna come back in a month and then we'll be able to.
As long as you've got enough information, yeah.
Well, and if I've got questions.
Bring us a draft in a month.
Because that's gonna be my starting point.
Hey, I'll see you at the next one thing meeting in nine minutes. Ernie, what I wanna know is do we all have to start calling you the big guy?
Better than you can come up with.
Yeah, we need to.
Good.